I guess if you're ready, we'll call the meeting to order, please rise for the flag to play. The flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, moving on, approval of the agenda, I got a couple additions for you. Under new business, under item D, we're gonna have another road commission work order for Melton Road. And under E, we have Church Road easement.
My sister just came in from Metropolitan.
Oh, okay. And we're gonna add F, which is marijuana law. That's all I have, does anyone have anything you'd like to add or alter on the agenda?
There's no other addition, I'll make a motion to approve.
You need to call Cynthia for directions.
Support.
Moving to support on the agenda as not submitted.
As amended.
As amended. Any discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, stating, voting.
Do we count that as four then?
Yeah, that's four.
And one, one.
Well, he stepped out. So, it sounds like he's coming back.
I'll just say that Dan stepped out.
Okay, moving on, approval of the minutes for the August 8th meeting.
No one has any additions or corrections, I make a motion that the minutes be approved.
Moved and supported to approve the minutes for the August 8th meeting, any discussion? Hearing done, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, stating, motion carries. The next item is a financial report.
We began the month with eighty-four thousand ninety dollars and nine cents, and we took in receipts of thirty thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy cents. We made disbursements in the amount of forty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-one cents, leaving us with an ending balance in the general fund of sixty-five thousand twenty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, the accept a financial report as submitted.
Moved and supported to accept the financial report as submitted, is there any discussion? Hearing done, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, stating, motion carries. Old business, A, park committee update.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we had a, we had a meeting last night, Hallen was gonna distribute some information and basically tell the members that until we know about whether we, our grant is approved or disapproved in December, we won't have the funds to buy the park property off the Six Rivers Conservancy. Couple of members were inquiring about the ninety-eight acres on Meisner Road, and we told them without a full-time police presence, and that that's just not a starter. It's just not a starter. So, we are looking at realities that, keeping it simple at first, they're on the park property with walking trails, fishing areas, kayak launch, maybe a picnic area and that. We'll wait when, if we get our grant is approved, then, and we buy the property, then we'll engage with St. Clair County Parks Recreation and use their expert and help design it. So, I mean, we took a walk of the property a few weeks ago, it was nice, I was impressed, I thought it was a lot better. You know, some people were talking about Bell River was low, but late August, I mean, any river's gonna be low in late August. But, I think it's a really nice, it's right off of the interchange, the sheriff or state police can circle in there, so at least that's gonna help us on the police presence, unlike the other location.
Plus there, you know, people come in and out of the gas station.
Right, right, so.
And so, if we haven't, no news is good news, is on the grants, nobody's called us to ask more questions or more information, so it must be going through channels. Hopefully, we will continue to do so.
Yeah, and when I saw, I went to a workshop back in March in Troy on grants, in our property, actually, there's people there talking about that property. I was surprised, there was people who heard about that and thought it was a great idea, another water trail park. But, just from my layperson's view on grant writing, it just, it seems like a lot of the points that are assigned to a particular project, that parcel would score very high. Of course, I'm just a.
Who knows?
A novice on. But yeah, it's, the members of the board are, they're very energetic and excited about wanting to develop this into something that's gonna make the township. All good? So, the little ones like that grow up, they'll have some, a little nice thing.
Okay, any questions? Hearing done, we'll move on to new business, item A is resolution two thousand seventeen eleven. Every year, the road commission sends us an application for local road fund matching. Two years ago, we did language identical to this, last year, we did the blacktop of St. Clair Highway. And so, this year, I was kinda flipping a coin between St. Clair Highway and ditching. But what flipped it over was, it looks like about a ninety percent chance they're gonna do that bridge on St. Clair Highway. And I don't wanna put any more money in that road until that bridge is done, because all of a sudden they're coming down that road with something heavy or damaging it. And even though the road commission says that won't happen, they're not gonna pay for it to go.
Well, could we tell them, just to use Palm Roads, we only give one mile St. Clair Highway damage versus?
You can tell them what you want. You know, so, so let's go with the ditching. If they get the bridge done next year, then we'll have to see how that mile is from Mayor to Palms first, because we'll see how much activity it gets. And then, we have like one more mile, which would be from Hessen to Melton, and the rest of those, not bad at all. So, but to go one mile, if I were to do that in here, they were looking at a hundred and fifteen thousand, of which we would pay half. So, it's not cheap. So, that's why I don't wanna risk anything at all if there's a chance that they're gonna be coming down there, because when they mandate those jobs, they also mandate what month of the year you do it. It's not just the job itself, so, I don't want cement trucks or any heavy going down there in April and causing damage after I just fix it. So, for that reason, we're going with the ditching, hopefully. This is the same thing we applied for two years ago, it's fifty thousand total, of which we are obligated to twenty-five. Part of it will probably go to Melton Road, because I don't think they're gonna get that done with the work order that's on the agenda a little further along. But, it says be determined, so we have some flexibility.
Okay, and Mike is keeping, telling us, he'll let us know what areas are.
Well, we all know where all the bad areas are, unfortunately, some of them are on the county road, I'm not guaranteeing it's county road. So, we'll see what happens. So, we need a motion.
I make a motion to accept resolution number two thousand seventeen dash eleven, Casco Township, St. Clair County Local Funding Match Funds for twenty eighteen for a price of twenty-five thousand dollars to be matched by from the St. Clair County Road Commission, with their twenty-five thousand for a total of fifty thousand dollars.
I'll support that.
Moved and supported to adopt resolution two thousand seventeen dash eleven, is there any discussion? Now, roll call vote, please.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Pat, yes. Bill?
Aye.
And Colin.
Yes.
Moving on, resolution two thousand seventeen twelve. It's our B schedule for the township, and we had a few quirks in it, that, there was a few things that weren't included. And, the one page where it's horizontal, where they give the planners fees and stuff, that was kinda confusing. So, we're trying to just bring it up to date. There is a couple changes, if you look at the sheet I put on your table. Building inspector would like those two things put on, which was, under residential homes, just up to twelve hundred square feet. Or previously, it was two thousand. And under homes and additions, the twelve oh one to three thousand were, before it was two thousand one to three thousand. There's a few small increases, nothing big. I think the building inspector would like some other stuff, but if we can hash it out, we can always come back to you.
Like where are some other things he was thinking about?
Well, I don't have it in front of me, but a couple of the things really weren't, the money wasn't going to him. I know he would like more money for planar views.
Commercial. Or to the commercial.
Yeah, on commercial, and probably even on residential, if you go by the formula that some townships use. But, for today, this is my best recommendation.
For pools here, is this in-ground pools?
No.
In-ground pool, okay. Both.
Both.
Oh, interesting.
And, just a little heads up, that equation that Roland wants to give, when I first came here, that's how we did it. And we changed it to this, 'cause this is easier. And the people understand it better.
Well, it is a little more complicated than that. The one that most of them use go by the value of the building. And, and then a percentage of that is what the inspector gives. Now, on homes, it's pretty much a wash, by the time he gets his ten to thirteen inspections, it comes out pretty close. But on, like all buildings and stuff, the value would generate a lot more money for the inspector than we currently get. So, I mean, there's pros and cons both ways, we're trying to keep it, the fees as reasonable as possible, because if you get crazy, people are gonna start building more stuff without.
Pulling the print.
So, Haynesville Ranch is.
Registration fees for the.
Oh. And, we have decided also, we use, they have a ten dollar registration fee. Fifteen, was it? For all of our plumber, plumber contractors, electrical, we are now, no longer gonna do that, there's no sense in doing it. They show us their, their licenses and everything, and that's good enough. So, that'll be one less fee the contractors have to.
Okay, so, is there any discussion or motions?
I make a motion to adopt resolution two thousand seventeen, Casco Township B schedule.
Two thousand seventeen twelve.
Seventeen twelve.
Just to be clear, these are really designed just to cover the costs of the township doing this service and not to.
Not to make no money.
Not to, not to increase our coffers.
No.
Who supported that, please?
Nobody yet, and I heard.
Dan?
Okay, moved and supported to adopt resolution two thousand seventeen twelve, the Casco Township P schedule, is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Colleen? Yes. Bill?
Aye.
Pat? Yes. Joe?
Yes.
And Dan.
Yes.
Moving on, item C, road commission work order, in your update, I kinda outlined a little bit that every year, we get about, roughly five thousand dollars from the county in matching burn money. We really haven't spent hardly any in over three years, so after three years, you lose it. So, we have almost six hundred dollars that we have to spend this year. So, Mike says this cost is gonna be generated this year anyway. He came up with this, and it's for twenty-one hundred and nine dollars, and it's for a new crossroad culvert on Melton Road when they do the ditching, which they plan on doing this year, yeah. And half of that will be from us, and half of it will be from the burn fund. That will still leave us roughly fifteen thousand in the burn fund. It's like a rainy day fund.
Okay, how much are we gonna pay?
Half, it's matching, the burn fund is matching. So, it's a twenty-one hundred dollar bill, and they will pay half of it.
So, we're paying half of the twenty-one nine?
Yep.
So, the amount would be one, five, four?
Well, we'll approve the work order, but it, I didn't, to be honest with you, I didn't look, he wrote the burn fund down here, he usually does.
Well, we need the correct amount that we're going to be paying in the minute. Am I not right?
Well, you're approving the agreement for twenty-one hundred and nine dollar culvert, of which, the money will be matched.
Half of the, and half of the burn fund.
Right.
Okay, where does it say that?
It doesn't on here, but it's all, before he gets it.
Yeah, I was just looking, I thought it said about burn, I said, I see a work order for a car install. But, we're gonna get the money to match that from the, our own fund.
Right.
Okay, that's, I understand.
I move that we approve the matching of the funds from the township for the burn, from the burn fund for the culvert, as proposed.
I'll support that. Moved and supported to approve the agreement for the crossroad tube on Melton Road, and the amounts indicated, and taking into account that it will be applied wherever is applicable to the burn fund, which we have. Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call vote, please.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Pat, yes. Bill?
Aye.
And Colin. Yes.
Okay, item D, another work order, this just came in today, and what happened was, as I mentioned before, in two thousand fifteen, we approved matching money for ditching. Okay, and in two thousand sixteen, they did the engineering, but they never got the ditching done. And this year so far, they still haven't done the ditching, but the money's supposed to carry over. So, Mike was getting ready to order all the culverts for the job, and he couldn't find a work order number. Well, they never assigned a work order number, and they're running all looking for agreements, because normally, they sign it, send it back, and then they give you a work order number. Well, for some reason, on this one, they wrote us a letter, said you got it, but Mike's gonna do the work order, and he wasn't aware of that. So, today, hurried up, did a work order for us. And, this is from two thousand fifteen, for the two thousand sixteen here. And it's the same as the one we approved earlier, it's fifty thousand total, which we pay half, and the county pays half.
Okay, I make a motion to, to approve the work order of, for this twenty sixteen Local Funding Assistance Program Agreement. Casco Township will contribute twenty-five thousand, the St. Clair County Road Commission twenty-five thousand, for a total of fifty thousand for ditching on Melton Road.
Support.
Moved and supported to approve the Local Road Funding Assistance Program for Melton Road ditching, any discussion?
Yeah, truth be known, we can never do enough ditching, right?
Well, the problem, and the reason. Well, that stretch of Melton Road, it's really, it just takes a beating.
Well, I'll say, all, lower half of St. Clair County's ill-given.
Well, but between the traffic, so we're hoping that it'll hold up better with better ditches.
Okay, yeah.
So, that's.
Of course, that's our.
Do we have a roll call vote yet?
Not yet. Not yet.
Roll call vote, please.
Colleen? Yes. Bill?
Aye.
Pat, yes. Joe?
Yes.
And Dan.
Yes.
Okay, moving on, this is, this item's just a little bit for discussion, you, a heads up, because it's probably gonna be on the agenda in October. I got a call this afternoon about two o'clock, from the road commission engineer. And they're working on engineering to do, to finish the ditching on Meisner Road, which is a precursor to paving it. And they're trying to figure out where to take the water when they get near Church Road at Meisner. And they would like to take it over to the Tonto Drain. And, we own that corner where the Cowher School once was. And they're interested if we would give them a little wider easement, so they can make a bigger ditch to get the water to go to the Tonto Drain. And I said, well, you know, how much you talking, because we've only got two acres. What, that's something, well. And he thought ten feet, but he didn't do the engineering yet. I said, I don't think ten feet will kill us, because you can't do anything in the front ten feet of your property anyway, but go along.
Two feet going north of Church Road?
South.
Is that the southeast corner you're talking about?
Huh?
Southeast corner, is it?
Yeah. Yeah, there's two acres on the corner, that's ours, there used to be a brick school there. And, even though I was around at the time, I don't know, I guess they just tore it down, because they merged with the Richmond School District.
It was sometime in the eighties when that schoolhouse was torn down?
I don't remember, because I was supposed to go to school there, the first three years.
You went to Joe's, you said.
Huh?
You went to Joe's school.
Actually, I went to St. A's. And then around fifty-eight, they merged with the Richmond School District, then they closed. So, we had the land, and, so this is just a heads up, so they're bringing to you, you know it's coming. We have to find out how much they need. I tried to blackmail them for a swap, but I didn't wanna hear it.
Okay, south down Church Road.
Church and what?
Meisner.
On the, the east or west side of the road?
East side, that's where our property is.
Oh, okay.
And how far down, all the way down to?
Well, he said, because I told them, our property doesn't go all the way to the Tonto Drain, he said, no, but it's like sixty-five feet, and they can get work around that.
Okay.
So, it's probably three hundred feet square, our property, because it's two acres.
Do they have to engage with the property owners to the south of us?
Well, either that or they have to put it in a tube and cover it up. That's up to the engineer. So, I told them if they would finish cleaning that ditch on Church Road between Putty Gut and Lindsay, I would gladly give them a nice big visit.
I bet there's an old septic tank down there beneath that school.
I don't think they have a septic field.
No.
Well, the one down here, you can still see the outhouse, the one at the corner of Putty Gut.
A septic tank?
I'd always say, I'd say outhouse.
No, that, I mean, since that's not that far back in the future, I mean, that was.
Well, it was only open about twelve years after the war.
And there's a fuel oil tank buried there? I'm just saying, I can remember, that schoolhouse existed up until the early eighties, I remember that.
But, the tank wouldn't be within ten feet of the road, so.
If it was, I mean, would that really be our problem, if they hit it?
No, I think it's been.
Yeah.
It's been sixty years, so I don't think there's a contaminating problem. There is a well there, I know that, I don't think that's within ten feet either.
Hopefully, there's no buried surprises.
Bodies, they might find the time capsule, that'd be cool.
Probably the kids that didn't behave.
Ten years ago when.
We wondered where he went.
Ten, ten years ago, when they replaced the county, the bridge over Bell River on Division Road, that bridge was built in nineteen forty, so they were gonna put the new foundation straddling that. Well, when they dug, they hit the foundations from the original bridge, that was sold in nineteen eighty-one, so.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah. We were up at St. A's, we expanded our parking lot there, and we had a septic tank and a fuel oil tank from an old public school that was on the corner of Franklin and Howard Street.
Lennox Elementary?
Yeah.
I'll tell you all of them, I went to that. And then, I tell you what, the church bought it from the city, because that was Richmond's elementary. And, it was older than dirt, and so was the furnace, had old single pane glass that went like that, and everybody sat in half the winter, he sat there with all your clothes on, all big. That thing was cold.
Open the windows, let the heat in.
And they tore it down. But I went to that school, I even got pictures of it. Okay, so I'm just giving you a heads up on the easement thing, let's see what they need.
That's funny.
I tried to blackmail them to a swap or something, would've been more good, so. So, maybe I can drag, as we're applying for matching money again tonight, maybe I can make sure they're gonna go for that before I give it up. Whatever, we'll see. Okay, that's it for that. I added the marijuana lawn, two things. Early this year, when they passed the new lawn landscaping with the five categories, I brought it to the board, and I said, you know, none of these take effect unless the board approves an ordinance. The feeling I got was, the general consensus was, we're not gonna do anything. Okay, so I just wanted to bring it up, because one of the residents came, and he's all rubbed up, he wants, you know, why aren't you doing this, you're gonna make all this money, yada, yada, yada. So, he couldn't be here tonight, or he would've been. So, I just wanted to touch base again, to make sure that everybody's on the same page, if somebody isn't, you know, now's your chance to speak up. I don't mind exploring anything, but I think the dust should settle.
And see how it goes?
It's probably gonna be on the ballot next year. I'd be shocked if it wasn't. And let's see how that evolves. I talked to one guy that's a, wants to go kind of big time in it, and he said he would not in any way ever put that facility in a place that didn't have city water and sewer.
Oh, okay, that lets us out. Well, that'd be right next to the school.
I don't know, that's what he told me. And I said, well, you can get water on Green City Highway, but no sewers available. So, anyway, the other part of the law is, the old law that's in effect today, most of that's going away. But the primary caregiver isn't, okay? We've never passed an ordinance on primary caregiver. And a guy came in, and he's talking about, he wants to put up a five thousand square foot facility, well, a caregiver can only have seventy-two plants. But I think what it is, they get about fifty people, they all get, they're all caregivers, and they're gonna end up with, you know, a thousand plants or two thousand plants. Well, if I want two thousand plants, I'll approve one of these ordinances, and I can license over five thousand a year.
Right.
So, I got ahold of the planner, and touched base with the lawyer, most of the neighboring townships allow it for a home occupation. I'm not a hundred percent sure that's legal, to be honest with you. So, I had them explore whether, because most things are done by zoning. And if we could do it by other zoning than residential. The problem I had with the home occupation is, you're saying, here's an area, here's a residential zone, if you live in the house, you can do it. But, you own the property next door, or whatever, and you rent the house, you can't do it. You know, there's been a court case in Grand Rapids recently where the home occupation lost in court, but I don't know if it was precedent setting. So, the planning commission's gonna be looking at this next Tuesday. So, we're gonna see if we get something in, because I don't want somebody to come in and do five hundred caregivers in a building, because we really have nothing to stop them at this time.
Right.
The planner said, well, where does the board want to go, do they want to go home occupation, like most of the neighboring townships? And I said, I don't know, but I'll ask them, so here we are. So, or I can come back to the planning commission and see what, I don't have anything in writing here. So, I don't know, I'm just whipping them, for sure. So, but I'll keep you advised of what's going on.
Okay.
So, that's all I have on that.
I wonder if we, or if a public hearing, I wonder if it'll be as. Well, we're the, or.
Well, the problem is, the problem is the timing. The problem is the timing, because everybody thinks you're going for the five category one.
Right.
Well, we're not. We're going for the old, the old one. And, you know, once they get started on it, even if somebody would apply for something crazy, we could probably have a moratorium, because it's in the process of working on it. But we gotta get started on it. So, that's where we stand on that. Okay, moving on, payment of the bills.
Are there any questions on payment of the bills today? Can I make a? Can I make a motion that we pay our bills?
Support.
Moved and supported to pay the bills. Is there any discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
I mean, who supported them?
Dan.
Yes.
Okay. Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Pat. Yes. Bill.
Hi.
And Colleen. Yes.
Okay, moving on, citizens' comments. Anybody can address the board with questions or comments? We've requested your name, but it's not mandatory.
From Hannah of Copenhagen, I live on Putty Gut Road. I just wanna say, I've been going to the Parks and Rec meetings, and it's pretty exciting stuff, and I'm excited to find out what happens in December.
Yeah, this young woman has been very energetic and doing research for us on the DNR, so.
Well, I'm optimistic, because I went to the meeting Joe did, and that's why we went for almost the maximum.
Right.
And they said that nobody, they have two categories of grants. One's acquisition, one's development. Development's cutthroat, you got 10,000 people asking for that. But acquisition, you don't.
Right.
And they said they haven't turned down one in two years, plus we've never had a park.
Exactly.
And we've never gotten a grant. So those things into consideration, I went for 1% less than the maximum, which was, the max was 75, which you get bonus points if you go less, so I went 74.
Yes.
So I went as high as I could.
I was working the angles, you know?
So hopefully, the review period's over, it was supposed to be August, but I called the one lady, and she said, "Well, it's supposed to be August, but hell, they might be a month late, so."
Right.
They have, no news is good.
Right, yes, no, I'm just, I'm excited about it.
And if we, if we get approval in December, the money would be available in April, I believe.
Well, that'd be good, I mean.
That's when the purses would take place. So I'm optimistic.
And Colleen and Joe have been awesome, directing us and trying to focus our visions.
Well, you got it.
Yeah.
We did, we did spend considerable time to defend that the 98 acres is beyond.
Right, yeah. But it's a question and answer period, and until we get down to work, you know, bring those questions up.
You know, it was questioned a lot and answered a lot last night.
Yes, it was.
Well, and you have to look, you have to look long range a little bit too, you know, "What's your population?" Ours is low. And is it gonna be self-sustainable?
Right. No, I like the idea of just a walking path. I don't think Casco needs something where it's gonna be like Algonquin State Park, where there's people camping and all that. I don't think anyone around here really wants that. But a nice walking path where, you know, you can meet up and ride a bike on, so you're not on the dirt roads or on homes or wherever you're going.
Somebody was in the other day, you know, and they say, "Well, gee, you know, you could do this and this and this." I said, "Well, we're only getting 17,000 a year."
Right.
And they said, "Well, you won't spend it on anything." I said, "Well, who's gonna mow the grass? Is somebody gonna pick up the garbage every day?"
Right.
You know, there's a whole list of things.
And I know me and Colleen talked about a couple of like community events, once we actually have a park, where we can do stuff like Chinatownship, where we can have a yard sale or, you know, a community barbecue and stuff, so it'd be nice.
I, I just cautioned our, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, Debbie, I was wondering, I live on there. We were talking about doing another walkthrough around when the river rises, to kind of get a better idea of what their property's gonna be like. Like Joe said, we went when it was dry, you know, the river was very low.
But I would advise you, if you're going to the, no, Six Rivers is leased to a major donor for deer hunting. So if you're gonna go.
Well, no, it would be April.
Be in spring before you get to see that.
Okay, well, I thought you meant this fall.
No, no.
Well, in April, though, you're gonna, you're not gonna get close to the river during the real wet season.
Well, and that's kind of part of what we want to see.
Yeah, how high that comes up.
For the self-maintenance, how much is gonna keep getting flooded every year, that we wanna make sure we don't...
Yeah, we don't wanna put on that structure in there, it's getting washed away.
Something in the way of water. Yeah, bridges over, it looks like dry land, but in the spring, it's actually...
Well, if you go down Palms Road, where the guy farms with two sides in the spring, when you get the big rains.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
No, I think we talked about that, because you should curb out of there.
It's late. It's not cash. That's why it's a flood plain.
Yeah.
I, I just cautioned our members that in today's reality, this kind of anti-government, anti-tax reality, if we ever lose that county village, we have to take it upon ourselves in that.
Right.
And it's starting to happen in other states.
Right.
Where they have to start their recreational facilities, in some cases, emergency support facilities like a fire station, that has to be cut back because of this anti-government, anti-tax fervor that's sweeping the country.
Yeah.
So.
I think by the end of the meeting last night, most people were on board with just like a low maintenance walking path to begin with, and then, yeah, and see where it goes from there.
Well, assuming we get it, and we'll touch base with the county, because they said they would send somebody down. And they use exclusively one person to do all their grants, developmental grants. So as soon as we know it's a done deal, then you can start there, because I'm ready to go for some type of grant.
Well, I, I gave her a list, a whole bunch of lists when we walked through, because I called the USDA and DNR, and I was like, "All right, where's the money at?"
Where's the money?
Yeah, and there was, I found a couple of them, but, you know, by the time the grant goes through and we get all that done, it could be a little farther out.
Well, there's tons of grants.
Yep.
They vary in the range of matching. And you have to be careful a little bit, because say you go for a grant, and they give you 30% of the money upfront.
Right.
And for some reason, you never complete or continue that.
Right, yeah, they have a timeline that has to be met.
You're gonna go for them grants, you're not gonna get one forever. Richmond Community Schools got a big grant one time from Kellogg's Foundation. And as soon as the money ran out, so did the program, and they never got another one from Kellogg's.
Cool.
Because they didn't continue it on their own.
Got it.
So.
Yeah, most of the ones I looked at were through USDA and DNR and DEQ were the ones that I was looking into.
But the one thing I got from somebody a while back, this organization helped people apply for like 697 grants. They got three. That's developmental.
Yeah.
So, you know, the chance of getting it either has to be small.
Right.
Or something, you know, really that stands out, you know, or you don't have a park already and you want one.
Right.
Or the river helps. Right now, the big thrust is ADA compliant, anything.
Yeah.
Okay? Well, we're never, I don't think we're ever gonna get to a stage where, they make them, but they have handicapped accessible kayak launches. They have one in Port Yorn, which I saw.
Yeah, it's like river.
But the trouble is, the river's not open to St. Clair River.
Right.
That's gonna be the next goal. East China's open to the river, but there's so many log jams, that's why the St. Clair County Park in Columbus, they would have a launch today, but the river's still clogged up, you can't go anywhere. So they haven't done one yet. They have a log jam over there, 1,000 feet long. You know, unbelievable. And eventually, it'll be gone, because it'll rot away in 100 years, but.
100?
Well.
Just as there are ways we could get that cleared up.
Well, we have log, well, we have log jams in Casco, actually, because I got a list trouble. Because if we weren't gonna buy this park property, I was gonna look at spending some of that $17,000 on the log jams. And the problem is, primarily, they're all private property.
Oh.
Okay, so it isn't like you can just drive in there and do something. You can't do anything without permission, unless you're gonna stay in the river, which isn't gonna happen.
Well, they did that, they, Mill Creek there, Northern St. Clair County, they cleared that out.
Did they?
Yeah, that was Fred Fuller's.
But that went under, that was like a county drain almost.
Right.
And they fought, and they spent over $2 million in court over that thing. They could've had it done for less than that. Fred Fuller, there was three counties involved, two of them loved the idea Fred Fuller did. And they ended up in court, they're fighting and fighting, and they went through and tried to restore it without excavating it. And that was the whole thrust of Mill Creek. And, but this is an actual river, so it's a little different. But back in the 50s, there were more elm trees than we ever had white ash trees, and they all died within two years.
No doubt.
Oh, Detroit was a city of trees, the entire city was covered with elm trees. And they all died, except the ones that come through the spray, like in the points. Well, all those elm trees fell in the river too. Well, they're gone. Now, maybe there was some more farmers that dug them off of firewood, but, you know, eventually, it'll clear up as long as it doesn't do any major damage. I know where it crosses Grashit there, Columbus has a little park that's eroded the heck out of that hill. You know, they actually have cave-ins. And Columbus went for a grant for a walking trail there, but they didn't get it. And I heard a couple of stories on why they didn't get it, but needless to say, they didn't get it, so I'm sure they'll try again. But developmental grants are much harder to get, so.
How long will the conservancy hold that property for you?
Well, what we did was, usually, they do two years, but I had them make it three. The reason I did that was, I wanted to go for the max. Now, if we don't get the 74%, we have one more window to apply next year, and we can lower the percentage. They told me, "If I keep it under 100,000, you're guaranteed to get it." Well, we went for 148. But that third year gave us a window to still do it, because the agreement says, "If we don't get a grant, Casco Township's buying that property anyway. We're not getting out of it, we're gonna buy it."
Oh, you already have.
Yep.
Yeah.
But you can't own it and go for the grant to buy it. That's why you got Six Rivers, this is how crazy they are, and they all do it. When they first told me that, I said, "You're nuts." No, that's what, that's what they do. They have a conservancy buy it, then you go for the acquisition grant, and then you buy it. You know, it's crazy, because it is, even if you didn't get the grant, you're still buying it. Or if you got a 10% grant, you're still paying 90%. But if you own it, you can't go for acquisition grant. That's the world we live in.
So it doesn't make sense to you?
So that's why we went for the three-year deal. Hopefully, the two will do it. I believe we're paying 4% of the money, which is reasonable. And other than that, because we're paying the trust fund, loan money for the Six Rivers to buy, with our agreement to purchase it from them. Okay? And so, in exchange for all their work, and Six Rivers did all the work so far, we're giving them $11,000. We gave them half last year, half coming up. When they did the same thing for the county, and the county did a lot more of the work, the county gave 10,000, so.
Reason there?
They made it happen, so, you know, because there was two foundations or conservancies in St. Clair County. And the county uses them both, but they just did a big watershed plan on Bell River for the last five years, and Six Rivers rained there. So I went with Six Rivers. So that's where we are, where we are. Anybody else have any comments, questions?
Yeah, I, I have one. Of the things that happened in Texas, down in Texas, they don't believe in zoning or a lot of their plan, they believe in just, I know they have a lot sometimes deed restrictions, but here, there are a lot of people, they're saying that if they had better zoning, better infrastructure planning, that a lot of that flooding would have been less severe. There was, they, there was engineers said 50, 60 years ago, that Galveston Bay should have storm gates. No, that's big government. Guess what? Now big government has to build them up.
Well, but if you go down in the Gulf, because I work down here, it's Marybug, right down, the old Galveston's right on the shore. The new Galveston's up on the hill. Corpus Christi, if you go in the Old Town, I mean, you're walking on a sandy beach, but that's not where Corpus Christi is after the hurricanes, they're up on the hill. So, and you're right, Houston has absolutely no zoning. You go in there, start a business tomorrow, and has its pluses and minuses.